Evening and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting on April 18th, 2023 at 6:04. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call.
Uh, Veronica, present.
Just Sexton Durian present. And if you join me with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance in effect by the United States of America, the US of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank all of our men and women in service. Thank you for your service. Um, chairman's additions or deletions. I would like to add a uh, a 4.6 in their meeting business on to discuss um the permitting for uh, the building. The uh, getting that laptop up and running and then we're going to be leaving now for that.
Okay.
And um, there was also um.
We needed to lead 2.1.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. The leading 2.1, um, the appointing committee for uh, Nishoba Valley and we're going to reschedule that until, what was it, May 2nd?
May 2nd, yeah, a short meeting before.
Short meeting before the town, before the town meeting, uh, to appoint um Sheldon to the Nishoba Valley school board.
Chris covering the day.
Yes.
It'll be live too at 6:30.
Okay, that's good. There was, we'll put there another appointment that I wanted to, I was a little confused that that I wanted to put off. That was 4.1. Correct, so on 4.1, um, I'd like to put that one on our next meeting on
May 16th, please.
Um, and if you could, um, notify the Chair of the Conservation Commission and say that because of last minute, we just wanted to check out things and we didn't have an ability to uh, to move forward with it, just so um, they know that uh, we are going to be addressing it on the 16th.
Okay, I will speak to James Gates about that.
Anything for? No?
Sounds good.
Well, we did start late, um, but 2.1 is um uh, meeting with the
10 minutes before we start.
Okay, 6:30, so why don't we do this? Why don't we um, do the minutes? I was kind of hoping that Teresa would show up between.
We can try to, I mean, she we can just do everything we can until 6:30.
Yeah, um, I, I, this is what's confusing me. This came to the select room on Friday regarding that appointment.
But look, I think the original email was not from the person requesting an appointment, it was from someone else. The person requesting an appointment said they didn't authorize that, so we're
No, that's not what it's on either.
Okay.
It says he's withdrawing the volunteer.
Right, but I want to, I want to check a couple of things out and we'll, we'll put it up on the um.
So that's where we're going to kick off at 16th, just move into there five things.
You're good and glad?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay, um, so let's um, look at the minutes, 3:28 and 4:04. Um, 4:04 I looked at.
I did too, 3:28, I haven't yet.
You haven't? Okay.
No.
You want to do this now or you want to put them up till next?
Well, I'll do um, 4:04.
Okay.
Um, so I make a motion that um, we accept the minutes for April 4th, 3:28.
You know, second. Any discussion? I didn't see anything.
I wouldn't.
All those in favor?
I'm for if I want.
Just Sexton Durian, yes.
And um, let's move the 3:28 minutes to the next meeting. Unless you want to take a look at them, we'll take them up right now. If you want to.
We could, we could uh, yeah, we just went to the next meeting, I don't think there's any reason.
To the 16th.
Yeah. Everybody had a chance to look at them.
We'll jump to 3.1. And that would be to appoint Jason Borman as an on-call firefighter.
Um, I make a motion that we appoint Jason Borman as an on-call firefighter.
Second time. Any discussion? Nothing coming, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So welcome, Jason. Uh, 3.2 is the appointment of Dave Fignoli as a full member of the ZBA for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Um, I move that we appoint Dave Fignoli as full member of the uh, Southern Board of Appeals for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second time, any discussion?
He's been the alternative, I take it.
Correct, yeah, he's been the alternative and he submitted the paperwork and it's been a, we did get an email from the Chair, so on the ZBA.
So, okay.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So, welcome to full-time Dave, like he was one of our full-time volunteers, I guess, just like us. And then 3.3, appoint Rebecca Morse as Community Services Coordinator.
Did we have a start date for her?
Uh, yes. That start date is next Monday.
So 4:24? Yeah, 4:24, yeah.
Right, I move that we appoint Rebecca Morse as Community Services Coordinator with a start date beginning Monday, April 24th.
Second time? Any discussion?
Um, I'll just say that I think we're getting an excellent candidate. I was um, in the interviews for all of the candidates, we had 16, I believe, African.
Yes, 16 African.
And we interviewed six and
Several that were excellent candidates. I think we were really happy with, yeah, we got quite.
Yeah.
It's going to be tough to fill in, we should.
It is, yeah. I think Rebecca's, Rebecca's a really talented, excellent individual, so I think she'll be, she'll do well.
So um, I made the motion with the second.
I just second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So welcome Rebecca, we'll be forward to the meeting here. Maybe if we can get her to the next um, on the 16th, that would be great as well.
Sure.
So, what are we doing? Um, we did, we, we um, put this off, Mr. Barrett had let us know that he wouldn't, wasn't able to be here, so we're going to put your appointment off until um, just before the town meeting on the second.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure. Thank you. 4.2, I don't put it in there.
Okay, 4.2, review and appoints, um, this is for the Mart Park, Mart Park and Run. So, we submitted or did we submit? Yeah, we did submit the, the schedule and they, have they approved on that?
Well, yeah, the email that Bruno sent um, gave the estimate based on the um, the letter that we sent them, so if you, you look at the email, um, the letter was attached and it included the routes that we put in play, that we suggested and the cost estimate for the routes and the portion that uh, the town Townsend would need to pay. So um, uh, once we've had a chance to review the estimate, we are to contact Bruno Fisher, who's in Minnesota in March and um, uh, let them know whether or not we want to uh, continue forward. So they have a, um, it need, it would need to be voted in the budget at town meeting, which it is included in, and um, yeah, that's not it, do you want me to?
No, I mean, I think the, the estimate is less than $10,000 a year.
Um, there is a contingency uh, that we'll have to put in place because they can't, the estimate that they gave us, do you want me to screenshot this or?
I think, I, I think we've already, I think the board already discussed the um, all of the routes. So all we're talking, really talking about is now just that number and whether or not the board is comfortable with the number they submitted.
Okay, so after all is said and done, two routes in the morning to Fitchburg, two routes in the evening back to Townsend from Fitchburg, the intermodal center uh, on weekdays, and then on the weekends, two routes in the morning, one to Fitchburg and one back to Townsend. And then in the late afternoon, early evening, same thing, bus goes back to Townsend, the bus goes from Fitchburg to Townsend. Um, and weekends are just about as expensive as the entire heat pool service. So anyway, all of that is an estimated total annual cost of $73,034 before anybody keels over at that. The assessment is at 35%, which is $25,562. The town has a MBTA assessment, which
Is it a credit to the MBTA?
It's a credit to the MBTA, which the town has never really used. It will be directed to March. And that's $16,218, so when you subtract that from the 25,562, you get $9,344. So that's the assessment for the town. And um, we would be running the service um, free for the first year to see how it's used and if it's used, and then to determine whether or not we want to charge a fare that would cover this assessment. Um, so anyway, but there is a contingency, um, it does, the, these monies don't take into account any delayed operating times incurred by late train services um, or vehicles providing the services required to wait for delayed commuter rail trains. So uh, that would increase the cost of the shuttle services. This will be a small bus, a 14-passenger van really, with the capability to hold bicycles. So um, that's what I do.
I think it's a reasonable cost for us to, to, to get the service for a year and see what the
Well, we actually allocated more in the budget than, than what this came back at, and I think this is a no-brainer, we needed it. I know that on a couple of surveys that we had done for other, other things, transportation has been number one um, issue with, with a lot of taxpayers, so I think that
The times we're running it, um, students could take the bus into town in the morning, walk to Fitchburg State or get on a bus to one of the Massachusetts centers um, and then come back. If the first evening bus voids Townsend, is that 6:15 right now? That's what we have it scheduled for the evening. So now you go to the library, you're scheduling all your classes for a certain particular day, something like that. So it allows for that.
Well, I think, um.
So I guess the motion is to move forward um, with the schedule that the Transportation Task Force um, requested of March 4th. And um, follow through with the next steps. They have a um, marketing person that will work with the town. Once they're notified, they'll let us know, but the, and he'll um, work with us to um, advertise the routes to get information out of the public um, about this, that will run for now from the Town Hall parking lot. And eventually, hopefully, we'll get some
A better designated spot.
Better designated spot for parking. So and we've been made a note for the MNG later, that um, Green Communities and Chico, I want to just make a statement. Um.
Yeah, so I think the motion that you said would be to approve the, the um, the estimate from March and move forward with the process.
Mm-hmm. Does somebody, is there a second?
Second? Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Good, I'm very happy to see that, that came back. Was, what was it then?
Can we talk about something else while we're on this, pardon?
I don't have any.
The Transportation Task Force.
Aye.
Do, we, I put in the share point, um, the reasons, the, the tasks that we were to take on. And I think we've met them all. The task force was made up of a selectman representative, that was me, the community outreach coordinator, the planning administrator, which is that. Um, and the council on aging representative, which was usually Karen, sometimes still on that, Karen could make it. And um, we looked at the transportation currently provided by LRTA. Um, the transportation that could be provided by Mark, Emily, as our community outreach coordinator, had gotten a lot of requests for transportation down there. What transportation is needed by all segments of the community currently and in the foreseeable future, and how might these needs be met? And so we accomplished all the goals that were originally set for us. So um, with Emily now being gone, yes, Rebecca could just fill in. And a different board of selectmen rep after next week's election could be placed, and you could put in place new tasks. But basically, we've accomplished all the tasks that we set out to accomplish in September. So we got, um, Karen did the, the uh, grant, but got the second ban for the senior seven from LRTA. We joined March, we figured out the routes, we've gotten the estimate, we're done with all. So um, you might want to decide whether this is something to keep going, and if so, what the, what you want the group to do.
Perhaps put that on there.
Well, I was, this, this can go on to the um, the next agenda.
16th?
Yes, um, I'd also like to put on there um, the um, what the VOS goals are with the new board at that time.
Yes.
Jason, thank you. But thank you, and thank you to the team that did that, because I know that that was very important. Thank you, Beth. I give Beth accolades all the time.
So um, Sabrina will send a letter.
Yeah, we can, we can send a lot. No, that hand is not a hand up, it's a, it's the Yeah, we've been fooled by that before.
So Sabrina will take care of notifying Bruno.
Yeah, we can I don't know how you feel about whether you want to try to do 4.3, I think it's a relatively brief discussion.
Wait, let me find my
4.3, discuss and vote on the right of first refusal for the chapter 61B parcel, 17, um, dash 2, dash 0.
All right, do you want a question on, I have a question on that.
You have a question, go ahead.
Um, I looked at the um, assessors map and I looked at what was submitted, and I found a discrepancy between the size of the lot. In other words, the size of the lot on the assessors map is thick acre plus or minus, plus. The, the, um, what I look at for the right of first refusal is three, a little more than three. And I'm curious as to what the discrepancy is.
It's a proposed subdivision of the lot and selling off a portion of the lot. So they're proposing, they're proposing to take it out of chapter 61 and then sell off three acres to, for, for uh, residential
Um, so, so I guess then the next question is um, as far as timeline goes then, because that has to be with planning board, correct?
Um, I don't think they, we haven't looked at it to see what kind of requirements there would be for the actual construction. This is, or the subdivision, this is just, they, they wanted, they wanted to, before they could do any of this, they had to inform us that they were taking out of chapters 61B, and that triggered our right.
The whole parcel, so the rest of the stuff that's included in this packet is really irrelevant to what we're looking at.
Right, correct.
Okay.
It's just for informational, so that the board knows what's happening.
Okay.
If I could, I, I don't, at, at this point in time, there doesn't seem to be a compelling reason for the town to exercise its right of first refusal um, on the parcel. And quite frankly, I don't know if we have the funding to do so anyway.
I, I looked at it and it doesn't, but anything that um, isn't critical habitat, um, it's so critically at that statement.
That's just my, obviously the board.
So I, I couldn't see a reason to, I, I was just puzzled by the
Right, yeah.
So I
I don't see anything either that would propel us to do anything really, so.
Um, okay, so I move that
To not exercise, not exercise the right of Yeah.
Then I move that um, board of selectmen not exercise the right of first refusal um, for parcel 17.
Second time? Any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Put in any thought, Eric, huh?
Hey, yeah, we still got, we still got three minutes, we can probably get through 4.4 too.
Why don't we try? Uh, this is to vote on the sale of bonds in the amount of $2,140,000.
Uh, so actually, it's very good news for town, our um, if those who were watching closely will know that this number is lower than the original um, uh, sale of bonds that we had contemplated earlier. Um, the town's financial position was such that we got a premium, um, which means the, the company that's buying the bonds paid us money. It's ostensibly to help with the um, all of the kind of underwriting and other documentation that has to go on with the preparation for the sale of bonds. But after that, that was paid off, that was about 40,000, between 40 and 50,000 dollars for all the preparation, and after that was paid off, there was an additional $200,000 in the premium amount that we received, we were able to pay down the principal of the bonds with that, so it actually allowed us to borrow less, and that's as a result of the town's high rating that we got from Moody's, um, that allowed us to get a really competitive offer, and you know, basically 10% of what we were anticipating buying just got paid off by, by the company that's, that's putting out the bonds. So um, it's a really excellent deal for the town, um, and I think the, you know, I think the, the board should be um, committed for the kind of the fiscal responsibility that goes into giving us that kind of rating and, and allowing us to save that kind of money for the taxpayers.
So we need to vote on the sale?
Yep, it would just be a vote to, uh, to approve the sale of bonds in that amount to SWBC Investments, all of them.
All right, so I make a motion that we um, approve the sale of bonds in an amount of $2,140,000 to SWBC Investment Services, uh, this way.
Second time? Any further discussion? You want those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous, I guess, right?
So we have 30 seconds left, we could try to get through 4.5.
Uh, no. Nice try.
That was hopeful.
So we'll move on to 2.2, um, and this is a joint meeting with the planning board in regards to street acceptances at Harbor Trace Road and Coop Ridge Way.
Discovery signing sheet for the public hearing.
Yes, yes, for the public hearings. Anybody who's here for the public hearing would need to just sign in.
I mean, I'm and I could have board members.
Yes.
Let's see, Ian is on the
Yes.
Is there, so?
And I'll get to that.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Ian. Now it's, we are at 6:30, okay. Hello, everyone, my name is Laura Schipren, I'm chairing uh, the planning board, and I'm calling this uh, our planning board meeting to order first uh, at 6:30 PM on uh, Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. I'd like a roll call vote of the board members, please. Tara Hawes is present.
Ian Ortiz present.
Robert.
Robert Thierin present.
Okay, and Laura Schipren present. Bye. Um, there aren't, that was 1.1, and 1.2 is chairman's additions or deletions, there are none, meeting will be held as toasted. Um, 2.1, our joint meeting with the board of selectmen regarding uh, street acceptance Harbor Trace and Coop Ridge Way. I'm going to call the public meeting, the public hearing to order now at 6:31 PM. And I will introduce the board members, please. Carol Hawes, this, Robert.
Robert Thierin.
And Ian.
Ian Ortiz.
Laura Schipren. And everybody is doing the five signs. We're going to read the public notice. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, 81G, and the Planning Board Rules and Regulations 17521, Layout and Acceptance of Waste. The boards will hold a public hearing joint with the board of selectmen on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. In the selectmen's chambers at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street, and via Zoom, not going to need the address, um, regarding a petition submitted to the board of selectmen to vote to lay out the road entitled Coop Ridge Way and Harbor Trace Road, located off South Street, Assessors Map 33, Block 79, Lots 1-19, Map 34, Block 46, Lot 0. Sonced residential submitted by Peter A. Campabasso Esquire on behalf of Westwoods Realty Trust, Ronald E. Coyview Trustee, 493 Lancaster Street, Suite 1, Womester, Mass. The application and plans are available for review at the Planning Board's Land Use and Town offices at 272 Main Street during regular business hours. Parties wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this proposal may do so in writing prior to the hearing or may appear at the hearing in person or represented by an agent or attorney. Interested parties are encouraged to attend. And the public hearing has all the copies that it went to. Are the parties here?
Yes.
Proponents, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. My name is Peter Campabasso. I'm an attorney for the office in Womester, Mass, Free Park Street, I'm going to stand or if you're
However, you're comfortable.
Yeah. My office is at Free Park Street in Womester. Um, I represent Ron Coyview, who is petitioning to have Um, I represent Ron Coyview, who is petitioning, uh, to have Harbor Trace Road and Coop Ridge Way laid out as public ways. Um, they both, uh, come from a, a subdivision that was approved probably twenty, twenty-two years ago. Um, the original applicant was Northwoods Realty Trust. Um, some of the previous plans that were filed had reference to Northwoods. Um, the subdivision was approved, I believe, in two thousand and one. And no real construction activity took place for maybe one or two years. And, uh, when the construction picked up, the land was transferred from Northwoods Realty Trust to Westwoods. And so that's why the proposed deed would come from Westwoods. Essentially, the, um, roadways were built, constructed pursuant to the town's subdivision regulations in accordance with the subdivision plan that was approved and the special permit that was, uh, issued with the subdivision. Uh, recently, they have completed all the work. The, um, as-built plans and the road accepted pla- uh, plans were finalized, corrected, uh, and submitted with the application. If the layout is recommended, it's voted by town, where they can uh, sign the deal with the transfer of the roadways from the trust to the, to the town itself. We believe all of the requirements under the subdivision, um, approval have been combined with. My understanding is the, uh, some, at some point last year, when the original application was filed, um, I did have discussion with, I believe, um, Ms. Kell, and, um, the DPW directly did go out, doing inspection, there were some minor items that had to be addressed. They were addressed. Um, and I believe all of that has been inspected and signed off on. So we're at a point where the roadways are completed and they can be turned over to the town.
I think there's no other comment right now. I'm going to move on to the mandatory referrals, and I'll be reading them into the record. This is from James Smith, the highway superintendent. Due to April thirteenth. After reviewing and inspecting the proposed roadways, it appears that Harbor Trace and Coop Ridge Way have been constructed in accordance with the subdivision plans. I have been provided, that, I think it's been provided, all sidewalks, curbing, signage, and number of catch basins installed have been met according to the plans. Harbor Trace has some surface cracking and cut holes have formed within the roadway over the years. It is my understanding that the town water department will be repairing and resurfacing all of Harbor Trace with tumulus.
By tumulus.
Concrete, sorry, not my normal vocabulary here. Once the water treatment facility is completed. I do not see this being an issue. The subdivision has been under construction for many years. It is my recommendation that the drainage system in its entirety be inspected and cleaned of all degree by the owner. And that's been agreed to by you?
Yes.
From the building commissioner. To whom it may concern, I have been asked to provide commentary on a proposal to accept Harbor Trace Road and Coop Ridge Way as town road after the town received a petition to include the acceptance in the annual town warrant. After reviewing the subdivision plan inspection of the proposed road and review of the procedure of the road acceptance, I have noted the following. Finding a fact. The special permit for the open space development contains the following condition. J, conditions with respect to duration of approval. One, this permit is conditioned upon completion of all roads, utilities, and other services within twenty-four months after the approval of this amended decision. And provided further that the road utilities and other public services be maintained at applicant's expense until such time as the road is accepted by the town as a town way. Two, to ensure compliance with the condition that the road be maintained and plowed by the applicant until such time as it is accepted by the town as a town road, the applicant shall post security with the town treasurer in the form of a passbook account. The security shall be no less than twenty thousand dollars, and the planning board may raise this amount as part of the definitive subdivision process based on annual actual construction, maintenance, and plowing costs. In the event the applicant fails to adequately maintain the road or plow the road, then the town shall have the right to make a claim on the security or its costs in maintaining and or plowing the road. The form of security shall be reviewed and approved by town council. The current condition of the road is poor. See pictures attached. Okay. The islands installed are not in compliance with the rules and regulations of the planning board, which states section one seventy-five dash sixteen B. Dead-end streets will not be permitted except where such dead-end streets are deemed by, by the planning board to be a, in the public interest. If dead-end streets are permitted, they shall not be longer than five hundred feet unless, in the opinion of the board, a greater length is necessitated by the, by topography or other lo- local conditions. In any event, at least a hundred and ten feet and an outside property diameter of a hundred and twenty feet, and shall be increased in specific cases at the discretion of the board or the public interest. There shall be a circular landscaped island with a minimum radius of thirty feet with the landscaping designed by a licensed landscape architect using maintenance-free plantings. The outer six feet of such landscaped islands shall be planted with a low ground cover or other suitable plantings that can withstand the piling of snow from snow plowing. The board may require a roadway easement from the end of the dead end consistent with provisions of Mass General Law uh, forty-four, eight, eighty-one Q for easements in turnaround. See pictures below. And that would be these. The sidewalks are not designed in accordance with the rules and regulations of the planning board. Section one, one seventy-five dash sixteen C, which states, sidewalks are required on both sides of the roads constructed within the subdivision as shown on the plan of the typical cross-section of forty, fifty, or sixty-foot street. Including within these rules and regulations, and shall be of tumulus concrete where a portion of the subdivision is an existing road. The applicant may be required to construct a sidewalk for the portion or, alternatively, at the discretion of the board, grant the town an easement for the purpose of constructing such sidewalk at future date. Sidewalks are not on both sides of the street in many areas, some not at all. See pictures included. Okay. I mean, I'll pass this around because a lot of. As I had, because it's a blank plate. Um. The monuments are incomplete and may be inaccurate. As such, that is a violation of the planning board's rules and regulations. I have met with residents to discuss this matter and see it firsthand. And I just ask about, did, did you get this?
Yeah.
Were the referrals given to the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're hearing this for the first time?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Monuments, concrete, or concrete bounds reinforced, concrete or concrete granite, uh, bounds of not less than six inches by six inches by four feet with a three-eighths inch drill hole in the center shall be set on both side lines at all points of the change in direction or curvature of streets and points of tangent. They shall also be set at the intersection of the sidelines and sidelines of existing streets. I still have more to read. Would you mind getting copies, please, for the applicant? Of all the, all the, uh, mandatory referrals that came in? Thank you. Monuments, concrete, or granite bounds. One, bounds shall be set in a bank gravel with their tops at the proposed finished surface, grade to the satisfaction of the highway superintendent and the planning board. Two, certification in writing, which he has in bold in here, uh, shall be made by the registered engineer or the developer to the highway de- highway superintendent and the planning board, that the bounds have been properly set in accordance with the approved plan and rules and regulations of the planning board. The curbing is not as prescribed in the planning board's rules and regulations. It is quote-unquote Cape Cod-style tumulus concrete, AKA asphalt, as opposed to the current requirement for granite. All ways shall have the gutter lines for their entire length curved with granite curbing, vertical or sloped, as determined by the planning board, to protect adjacent land from erosion, facilitate cleaning, and prevent encroachment of vehicles. Granite curbing shall be constructed and conform to the Massachusetts Highway Department, M H D. Current standard specifications for granite curbing, no deviation from such specifications, again in bold, shall be made without special and specific permission in writing of the stormwater authority. The town code, um, which is the planning board. The town code one seventy-five dash twenty-one, layout and acceptance of ways states, the acceptance of a way as a town way is a separate process only indirectly related to the subdivision approval. The acceptance of the street as a public way requires a majority vote at town meeting. The board makes no representation that it will recommend all streets built according to these rules and regulations for acceptance. Based on this language, I am unsure if the conditions described above matter. I think the only thing that can be done is to convey this information at town meeting and let the voters decide. Also, I spoke with David, um, that's the water attorney. I want to say his name wrong.
Did you?
Yes, Binge, today. He is repaving, he is repaving a considerable amount of the road as part of the PFAS treatment plan. The condition of the road may not be as concerning considering the water department plans and, especially if the building inspector. See that, and the board can see it. And, um. I'm sorry that you're going to be seeing some of this with a different, but so are we, because this is the opening of a public hearing, okay?
That's fine.
Hey. Highway Department. Uh, referral notice. Application opposed. This is Harbor Trace and Coop Ridge Way, and the comments on this. After reviewing and inspecting Harbor Trace and Coop Ridge Way, it is my recommendation that the town and towns and adopt these two roads as a town-accepted way. So that was from the highway department. And then, from the water department. Acceptance pending approval of additional funding water treatment plant. No treatment plant, no road improvement. Okay, let's comment on.
What was that? I'm sorry.
That was the water department comment.
And what was the comment?
Basically, what he was saying was that if there was no funding for the water treatment plant, there would be no, um, treatment plant, and so there would be no wa- no town improvement of the road. Or, so, but the, they have the money for the water treatment, right? There is more to be.
There is a, a, there's a, um, a warrant article on town meeting for additional funding for the treatment plant.
Okay.
The funding for the road improvements, including this additional funding.
Okay.
And so it is on before the acceptance of.
The road.
Ways, so.
Okay.
If for some reason that failed.
Right.
We would probably, uh, suggest not passing the acceptance against Harbor Trace. We need to be brought up and discussed in some other town.
Understand?
Yes.
And then, uh, conservation commission had no comment. And those are all the public comments. So at this time, I'd like to know if the board members of the planning board have any questions for the applicant.
I just want to be. So the subdivision was approved a long time ago, right? What was it?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Okay. And since then, we're going forward with the water treatment plan, which is an extension that has to use that road for the new treatment. Okay, so what I think we have to focus on, look at is what we can provide now as a town already for the treatment plant. And what was obligated on the regional subdivision approval. You know, the, the planning and zoning board that reviewed that original subdivision plan did a very comprehensive job of what they would want to approve. And we're learning now that that hasn't been completed. And then we're also learning from the building department, there are some issues with the road construction beyond what was what I would call accessory things like sidewalks and things, but, um, the bounds have not been done, the curving's not correct. The island is not appropriate or up to its standards, uh, uh, that was referred to by the building department. So there are issues that the road, A, is, wasn't completed as approved. And then, what of those improvements does the town determine should be necessary? And, um, and, and corrective work as necessary? So, um, so, and if we took that out of the picture, the old subdivision, and we were building a new road for our sewage treatment plant, I would think that that would be the requirements we would have, uh, whether or not there was an existing subdivision or not.
Okay. Director, connect.
If I could, now, Chair, just very quickly, just to clarify the things about the comments. Um, there was a subsequent meeting to the comments between m- myself, um, uh, Jim Smith, the, the highway superintendent, uh, and Eric Chartrand, the, the building inspector. And, uh, I, I think there may be a little bit of misunderstanding, which is Mr. Chartrand's letter indicated that it's not compliant with the standards of the planning board. Those are the current standards, not the standards that existed twenty years o- uh, ago when the subdivision was approved. So Eric was com- like commenting that it, these roads are not up to the current subdivision standards, but they appear to be consistent with other roads that were approved at that time. In other words, at that time, uh, the, the bituminous asphalt berm was a, like a regular part of other roads in Townsend of that vintage.
Okay.
Um, so that, and, and that's a, just kind of one quick clarification. Um, the, the other clarification is, not a clarification, but just a piece of information for the board to know is, um, in order for us to improve this road with the water treatment plant, both as part of the water treatment plan process, it does have to be a town way. So if we do not accept Harbor Trace, the water department is not going to be allowed to expend their funds to, to improve it. funds to improve it, because we can't spend that money on a private way. So one of the reasons why this acceptance is coming forward now is because for purposes of the water treatment plant project and their, the water mains, they have to put along Harbor Trace, this is the time, this is the town meeting at which we need to accept it. So there will be a townway for them to, you know, repave it and bring it up to, you know, up to acceptable standards for the Highway Department.
So can you expound a little bit on the comment made about the stormwater review? Because generally, we have. Did we ever look at that? Stormwater review for Harbor Trace for the Water Department? I thought so. Okay. Okay. I can't remember everything. I'm not all planning for it. Carol, anything? Thank you for your comment, Robert.
No, I was just curious. It's mostly curious about what he commented about sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Oh, what of Eric's? So?
Yes, but that would not have been common then, only 20 years ago.
Only because my subdivision's a lot newer. And we don't have sidewalks.
Yeah, it's been only very recently that I think sidewalk on both sides of the streets are part of the subdivision.
That's why I was curious, because my house is only 70 years old and I was like.
So yeah, so it appears as though this is compliant with what was expected of them back in 2000, according to my conversations with the Highway and Building, but it's not compliant with the current regulations.
Campobasso, do you have a comment?
Yes, if I could, and thank you for allowing me to comment. To this gentleman's point, I think we could probably address a lot of the concerns that were raised by the building inspector, because in the decision, there were 17 waivers that were granted by the board that were initially approved. For instance, the sidewalk requirements, 11.03.01 sidewalks on both sides, there was a waiver that was approved, there was only sidewalk on one side. So I believe if we, we could sort of reconcile a lot of the differences that may have been observed by the building inspector with the decision and the waivers that were granted, to reconcile a lot of those, that those can be resolved.
I'm fine with that, as long as it's a reasonable, you know, trade-off here. And the other departments are satisfied. Everybody here knows the need to have this done. And so I think if you can review with the waivers work, then we don't even have to discuss that. And then any other corrective work that would be appropriate would be the death of vote.
Correct. We can record.
Your suggestion would be now if we present this to town meeting, we should present it with some sort of a recommendation, okay?
But that would, that would not come to the planning board. That's going to come to the board's side.
Okay. But I mean, that would be appropriate approach, right?
I don't know, I'm sure if the
I was asking, he would be the next. Ian, did you have something you want to ask?
Well, Robert already asked it for me. I was in the same thought with the building commissioner, but the question was already answered, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Ian. For selectmen, anything?
The one question I have is about the monuments, the granite bounds, the placement of those. Is there a waiver for that? Because what I do know is if you don't have those in place and you find out 20 years down the road that you need them, you wind up paying for a survey to have those reset. And so I like to know, I know that these are the roads, it seems, but I don't know if they are in place at all for the rocks.
I was just going to say, because right now, the board of selectmen is waiting for a recommendation from the planning board, we should probably kind of bifurcate the discussion. So we have
Okay, they're here, and so I was offering
It's going to happen right after, right after you guys vote. But then you have to make a verbal recommendation to the board of selectmen, and then they'll have their public hearing where they can ask the question. I just want to kind of make it clear that we're following the, the planning board deciding first and giving a recommendation to the board, and then the board, I apologize, I should have made that more clear.
Not a separate hearing.
Okay, so I mean, I was thinking, since they were also here, I would ask them, and then I would ask if anybody else in the audience that's in attendance here or on the screen, there are other people, should they be announced? There's other people in the public hearing.
If there, if there are people who are going to participate, they would need to
Announce who they are, because I see there's some of their names there.
They would need to have their video on as well.
Right.
But I don't see anybody raising their hand or turning on their video at this time.
Okay. Okay, so are there any, then I'll just ask the question, are there any more comments regarding the planning board's portion of this public hearing? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a recommendation from the board, the planning board, to recommend back to the board of selection.
Recommendation that we proceed to advance towards accepting the roads with the provision that certain portions of the work will have to be defined and reviewed and agreed upon.
Okay.
Based on the notes that we've received and the applicant's attorney's review of the variances that were given.
Okay. Hold on a second. There's a motion and a second to recommend with review of documents received, the acceptance of Harbor Trace and Coop Ridge Way. So any more discussion? Ian? Hearing none. I'll entertain a roll call vote. You say either yes, no, or abstain. Please.
Robert Tharian, yes.
Carol Hosses, yes.
Yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Ian, can you announce your name when you say yes? I'm going to be so on spot. From now on, you have no idea. Say your, recite your name and your, and your vote.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Thank you. Laura Schiffern, yes. I now entertain a motion to close the public hearing at 7:03 PM.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:03 PM on 18 April 2023.
Is there a second?
I second. Robert Tharian.
Okay. No discussion. Roll call vote, please. State your name and your vote. Carol Hosses, yes.
Robert Tharian, here.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
No. Robert Tharian, yes. Ian?
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. So the public hearing is closed. We are still in session. Do we close our meeting, or are we still in joint?
Well, are you, are you all done with your meeting?
No. No, we're not. Sorry. We are done with.
But that portion, if you have something else in your meeting, you should proceed with it, and then we'll go to the board of selectmen.
Yes, we are at 2.2. Planning Board Administrative Clarification of Roll Call Vote Taken on April 10, 2023 on the Matter of Site Plan Review Special Permit 22 Main Street. And I have a motion if you will entertain it. No, I have a statement. April 10, 2023, vote on 22 Main Street application. The agenda item, this agenda item is to correct an apparent clerical error in the April 10, 2023 vote of a member of the planning board on 22 Main Street application. During a roll call on the vote to grant the site plan special permit, member Robert Tharian voted here. At this time, we would like to request member Robert Tharian correct the apparent clerical error by indicating it, if he intended to vote yes, no, or abstain on that roll call vote.
My intent was yes.
Okay. Would you state your name?
Robert Tharian.
And yes?
Robert Tharian, yes, to perform the correction.
Okay. And I, I apologize to everybody who had to go through this, because it's something that should have caught his chair, and it will never happen again. Okay, so having said that, we are done with our posted business, and I'll entertain
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting at 7:05 PM.
Oh, maybe we should adjourn the planning board meeting at 7:05 PM.
And is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, let's let Ian second it. Thank you, Ian. Okay, and there is no further discussion. I'll take a roll call vote. Name and vote, please. Carol Hosses, yes.
Robert Tharian, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you all very much. This was an instructional video. Everyone will get the message. Thank you all.
All right, thank you very much. So I apologize for
I don't know, I thought we would
Are you, are you, is this next on your agenda?
They're going to have, they're going to open up the public hearing for the planning board right now, I mean, for the board of selectmen right now, on your verbal report.
It was a joint.
It is a joint, it is a joint public hearing, but it had to be held in two parts, because the, the recommendation for the planning board has to come to the board of selectmen before the board can act.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll still hang around for whatever. And you guys are still in session, because they're going to hear you now. Okay?
Thank you. I didn't realize that the public hearing was two separate hearings. I thought it was a joint public hearing.
I was there.
And then they would vote, and then we would vote.
Yeah, the way this would just, it just has to happen that before the board of selectmen can act, they have to receive the verbal report from the planning board.
We have to get the recommendation before we can
Right, so, so this is a separate hearing, not a joint hearing, because they have voted.
So this, I, it is a public hearing that I think is on the same subject matter, but it's the board of selectmen's portion of the public hearing.
So did, did you post for public hearing too? Okay, so then you got to open your part of the public hearing.
Well, then, I don't have the fancy notes that Laura you have.
I'll tell you, I'm all about tutorials, you know? So. I mean, that's what you do, okay? That's the outline. We all get a cheating.
Okay. Well, I'd like to open the public hearing for Harbor Trace Road and Coop Ridge Way Acceptance Hearing for April 18, 2023. Can we introduce the board members?
The running house, left board.
That's Exum Greenian Select Board. Public sign-in sheet, we can use the same sheet I was using?
And same, do we have a posted public notice of the thing?
I can give you
Is it the same one as the one that says joint public hearing?
It is, because it's on our letterhead.
I know it's on our letterhead. I'm just wondering if, I will go along.
It's a, it's the same notice.
We will hold a public hearing joint with the board of selectmen. Planning board will hold a public hearing joint with the board of selectmen.
So what's your recommendation? How do you want to proceed then?
I will defer to, if I have my, different from what I thought. That's all I'm saying. I, I want to make sure that there isn't an issue with us not having, we are no longer joint with the planning board.
It is the selectmen's, yes.
So how will staff notice a public hearing for this level that is not joint with the planning?
Well, again, I think it's, it's a, it's a public hearing on the same subject matter. It's just the board of selectmen's portion of it.
Okay. All right. We just closed ours, so just go with that. Everything was ours.
Have you opened the public for the record? Then we need to have them present. Then we have to see if there's anyone from the tick and question.
Yeah, and you have to list, right.
Yeah, you have to listen up, okay.
May I continue?
You may. As long as we're posted, I'm good.
So I read the whole legal ad, just like, just like they did, or?
Well, it's already been read.
It's already been read into the record, so.
But, I mean, they are
For their, for their, I would, yes, I would read the, I would read the notice into the record, and then I would, you know, open the hearing, you could, and then note that we got a verbal report from the planning board. We just received it.
Okay, in accordance with Mass General Lodge, Chapter 41, Subsection 81G, and the Planning Board Rules and Regulations, or the Board of Selectmen. Subsection 175-21, Layout and Acceptance of Ways, the boards will hold a public hearing joint with the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, April 18, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the selectmen's chambers at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street, and via Zoom. Regarding a petition submitted to the Board of Selectmen to vote to lay out the road entitled Coop Ridge Way and the Harbor Trace Road located off South Street, assessors map 33 block 79, lots 1 through 19, map 34 block 46, lot 0, zoned residential district, submitted by Peter A. Campobasso Esquire, and behalf of the owner, Westwood Realty Trust, Ronald E. Coho, trustee 493 Lancaster Street, Suite 1, in Leominster, Mass. 1453. And this is on a recommendation from the planning board that we accept these roads as town roads. Correct?
Was there a condition in there except for?
Their, their report suggested a condition that, that we take further action with the, with, with regards to the waivers that were provided, but that's part of their non-binding report.
Non-binding report. So if you want to put a condition on it, you would be doing
Yeah, I would accept the I would move to accept the roads as public ways, provided the waivers have been clarified as having to
Well, first, I just want to say that, is there anything you want to add to your proposal?
I think what probably makes sense, obviously, again, my name is Peter Campobasso. I appear on the ad vote, Ron Coyview, who's requesting that Harbor Trace Road and Coop Ridge Way be accepted and laid out as public ways. It was my understanding, based on my discussions with our engineer, when this was looked at last year, they had confirmed what items needed to be addressed with the superintendent of DPDW. I'm learning, obviously, tonight, that there were some issues that were raised. Um, I'm, I'm learning obviously tonight that there were some issues that were raised. What I'm suggesting is that based on the decision acquisition and the waivers that were granted, we can somehow reconcile whatever concerns the building inspector raised so that he understands what waivers and that will impact is, you know, uh, it, uh, great, it's questions that he raised. And, um, be in a much better light as to if there is any work that is remaining, um, and if work was not done, that it was not done because a waiver was granted. So that the, the Select Board can understand the actual conditions being up to the town's, uh, regulations. Um, the only problem we may have is, um, I, I have been trying to contain copies of the old, um, regulations compared to the newer ones today to make sure that we're not dealing with apples and oranges. We're actually dealing with what was, um, uh, conditioned at the time so that we can figure out if there's any difference today. In other words, I wouldn't want there to be the impression that subdivision regulation today that may not have been met. Um, which wasn't a condition back in two thousand when this was approved.
Just, just a, um, our E code, doesn't it list when things were changed?
I, I don't know.
I, I should, it may. Don't know. Change, but not after the words of what it was changed.
The town, well, I'm sure the town clerk gets records of the dates when, when regulations were changed.
And, and do those dates include the wording that it was changed to or from?
Typically, they do, yes. I've seen that in the past in town, right? Yes.
So I, I'm, I'm going to, um, we had the mandatory referrals read already with the, with the planning board. Um, and we have not had any other written correspondence to the Board of Selectmen in regards to this issue. Um, I will also say that we had a public hearing um, in regards to our warrant articles and we had no comments in regards to this particular warrant article at that particular time as well. I wanna note that. Um, questions, indoor comments from the board members, um, I'll entertain now.
I, I guess I just want, I guess what we've been talking about. I just wanna make sure that, I mean, it sounds like everything was done. I know we talked about this a year ago and that things happened because of that.
Right.
So, um, and of all of those, I am guessing that most of them were things that were put in place more recently than on this division subdivision was built. But the granite marker piece concerns me. I would just wanna make sure that all the the markers that should be there are there. The markers that should have been there at the time that the subdivision, these look like, what, what he's mentioning here sounds to me like it's to mark off where the location of the road is. I would just wanna make sure that all markers that are expected to be in place are in place. Does it really appear they're not?
They, they have to be because of the, the construction detail and the agile plans require that. So.
Okay.
I think when you look at the plan set that was dropped off last week, either, either Tuesday or Tuesday or Wednesday, I think, or I'm not sure what day it was. But the construction detail will have, um, reference to the monuments that you're talking about.
Okay. All right.
So I think if, if and when a, a motion would be made, it would, I think the, the condition would be that there's a reconciliation between the waivers that were granted in the subdivision and the then existing subdivision regulations to make sure that everything's in order with the subdivision.
Okay, so.
That, when, when that time comes, I didn't want to, didn't repeat.
So as far as, um, um, my comment, my comment is based upon the mandatory referral from the, from the building, um, commissioner. And, um, it really is one sentence that kind of says it all, actually two sentences that says it all to me in regards to that. He says, based on this language, I'm unsure if the conditions described above the matter. I think the only thing that can be done is to convey this information at town meeting and let the voters decide. Um, I think that's where it really rests. If you wanna go through, um, what was, what was proposed before, what was, uh, agreed to before, um, you know, uh, do, do we have enough time to really get all that information and is it fair to put the, um, the applicant through that exercise?
Well, here's the counter to it. It wasn't. It means that then the town is the one that will bear the expense of making sure that things are as they should be. Um, and if someone's willing to do that, then, oh.
But I, I think if we can get a hold of the, that existing subdivision regulations along with the decision with the waivers, w- we could probably have a joint meeting with the building inspector. I would imagine it wouldn't be a, a huge lift to, you know, knock out all those waiver and see what's.
This right here, I just think if we can eliminate, you know, as many as possible, then at town meeting, the Select Board might be in a better position to inform the public, you know, these were the issues that were raised. We reconciled, you know, eight out of ten.
I would feel comfortable with that if we did that. Um, to, to, to have a.
This way, you can give as much accurate information as possible.
Yeah. I just, we've gone through a lot of gymnastics to get it on the warrant and to go through all of this, so I don't wanna, don't wanna let that pass. So would you be able to put a joint meeting together with them to?
With the applicant and Eric? Yes, absolutely. And I, I'll be there, excuse me.
Would you ask the building commissioner to also have a written, um, report to us so that if we need to, we can?
For the town meeting?
Yes.
We'll do it.
Is that okay with you guys? Is there any other, um, questions or comments from the general public? Anybody on Zoom? There's no outstanding issues, or maybe don't think there is? We can close the public hearing.
Okay, and then what? Close the public hearing. Okay, so make a motion that we move the public hearing.
I'll second that. And listen further?
Aye.
Aye. Now we can go ahead and vote.
All right, so I make a motion that, um, the Board of Selectmen put forward, um, Coppersmith Way and Harbor Trace Cooperage Way and Harbor Trace as a, um, public way, um, with the understanding that all, um, uh, waivers will be confirmed, um, for, um, the right one prior to town meeting.
And I'll second that. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sure we have each other's.
Yeah. Certainly is. I will, I'll talk to Eric tomorrow and, um, figure out, I, I'll talk to the, try to track down the subject. Well, Beth, Beth Backton, who's here earlier, she's, she's not here right now. Um, I'll make sure I keep Beth in the loop. This one time it's out of the planning board's jurisdiction.
Right.
Cause they've, they've already made their recommendations, so really. Yeah, but I'll try to find the subdivision regs. That's really the, the piece that we're missing.
Do you have a copy of this decision? I'll send you the.
If you could email me a copy, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could say just something, it appears that Jason Bornerman, who is on Zoom, who we appointed as a firefighter earlier. So he, he missed his appointment, but I, we might take the time to say something to Jason since he didn't show up.
Hi, hi, Jason. We, we did, uh, appoint you, um, as an on-call firefighter. So welcome to the town and welcome to, welcome to, uh, a job that I'm sure is gonna be quite fulfilling. I'm, I'm more than sure that that will be. Jason. Um, we'll move down to four point five, review of the town administrator.
Wow, can we take a quick break so I can make a copy for you of what I? Thank you.
We can, we will take a brief. Five minute recess. Okay, so we will reconvene. Um, and we're gonna reconvene with four point five review of the town administrator. Veronica?
All right, well, um, we were all to have our, um, performance evaluations for Eric in today. Um, we don't have Teresa's because she's not here. She provided you.
Not in writing. We had a conversation about it, but not, she didn't provide it to me in writing.
Um, uh, by the charter, there should be a summary, uh, written that becomes public record. But um, we don't have hers, so I guess we won't include it. And much has been applied. All right, um, what I'd like to do, these are all criteria that we established last summer. June, July timeframe. Um, and so we'll start with one, the financial health of the town. And, um, my, uh, Eric's are circled, so I think we, I mean, Chad's is circled. And mine are bold.
Bold.
Okay, so I think we should, uh, we should take these one at a time. So starting with financial health of the town. So do you wanna do yours first? Or do you want me to?
No, go ahead.
Or should I do it all together?
Well, yeah, we'll both do it together.
Uh, uh, I mean, okay.
It's a mutual effort here.
It is, and we both ranked you a four, that looks like on that. So, um, that, that criteria, um, without reading every word, maintains sound fiscal policies and presents a balanced budget for the town, follows the budget policy and budget guidelines specified in the charter. So do you wanna go with your comment?
I was very general. I just said, for only being here a year, Eric far exceeds the expectations over the O S. And I would think that there was a, would be a more, um, longer learning curve, but you jumped in and swam in the deep end of the pool when you got here. So I'm very, very pleased with your performance in that respect. Thank you.
So my, my comments were accomplishments included acquiring, was it ClearGov? Is that the name of that software? Um, through the community compact grant that will hopefully make a difference in planning for the next fiscal year. Um, also, you, you worked with the finance committee and all departments to produce a workable budget on the municipal side of the operating budget. And we all know where, where we stand on the school side of the total budget, so.
But the, the, we had the budget some, summit, that was, that said a lot to me how we, it was organized. We had everything all ready to go and that, that was very impressive. Years previous, it was, that could turn into quite a show.
And it, it slid right through its mouth. There, you know, we're in good shape. We just have to see what happens with respect to the, uh, the ride. And where we go from here. All right, uh, number two, moving on, was contract negotiations. And, uh, it looks like you gave Eric a four and I gave Eric a five. Go ahead and do your.
Um, I just, I felt that there's no need to micromanage, um, at this particular level. Um, you have the town's best interest, um, in all of your contract negotiations. I think part of the reason, uh, I know because I was on the committee, your, your legal experience was, was something that was, um, first and foremost, um, that was impressive, but I think is your personality and your ability to work both sides and get both sides of the story and, and get a clear understanding of it. That's, that's where I think is the most important thing for you. Thank you.
And my comments were based on the negotiating sessions I have been in with you. I, I think you do a great job organizing and scheduling and actually holding negotiations with all of the union. Um, I, I thought the format of meetings and the tone in the meetings are beneficial to getting a contract settled, so that's, um, I, I think you do a really good job with that. You have a. All right, number five. Um, this is staff development growth and recruitment. So I'm looking at this. You gave Eric a three and I gave Eric a four point five, so.
Four point five.
Four, oh yeah, I, I, I've done this in a couple places.
I bet.
So go ahead. What's your comments, please?
Uh, I, staff development in, in, in the growth, uh, for what we are looking at, um, it, I found this very hard to, to really. I mean, I did a three meets expectations because it, 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 it was a very difficult situation that you walked into. Um, and my expectation was that you were gonna stay here for a year and we'd be doing a year review, and guess what? You're here. But all joking aside, that with the duties, um, that you have to handle, um, you're doing well with what you walked into. Um, and I believe that you'll be able to settle in more this coming year. Um, you're, you're dealing with a lot of, uh, with a smaller group like this. Um, as another administrator, I've, I've had to deal with personalities and, and it's very difficult when you first walk in and you, you, uh, you have that. Think this will be, um, higher for me as, as next year, uh, but you've met my expectations for right now in regards to that.
All right, so I, I gave four point five. And I added an E, but there were four sections to this, all right? And so I looked at this as, did you meet the four sections? So A was maintain staffing levels in town. So my comments are based on each of those. Staffing levels is a tough one because good hires, not hireers, it should be hires, keep resigning for more lucrative positions with advancement intention. But we have both the new community services coordinator and the land use coordinator starting soon fill those two positions that were, that should say quite a loss. And then, so I thought, um, I mean, I thought that was worth at least a four, if not a five, because of the fact that it wasn't your fault that they left. I mean, it's the nature of municipal governance. So, and we turned it around and got new people in right away. Or almost, well, not right away, but pretty good. So that's why I did that. B was hired for time town accountant. Well, we all know that for two years we've been trying to do that. So my comment here is deputy town accountant plan. Eric thought it was in play, should result in a homegrown town accountant in two years or so. That position has not had a permanent employee in total two years. And so I felt that you did a really good job in finding a way to, um, to, to, to fill, uh, the town accountant position. Without, well, yeah, I mean, it's a workable plan. So I, I thought that was, um, great. Um, for C, C that department heads schedule and attend professional development for themselves and for their department staffs. So I know that, um, certain department heads have attended, um, training, but I didn't run in general. That's why there was no five.
Yeah, so the, the assessors have done the trainings, uh, obviously, uh, uh, Katie's going to a professional development training.
Right.
Um, uh, the clerk's office was going to, uh, it's going to a specific court training. The, um,
Land use.
Yeah, the ladies, but all three of the remaining members of the ladies have been to, uh, to been to specific trainings as I started, um. Uh, the, the, the one thing that I think. Yeah, so police and fire have their own kind of training schedules, so the chiefs would, would, uh, end the trainings. Um, I think we probably need to make sure that we get highway and cemeteries looped into that. Probably need to make sure that we get highway and cemeteries looped into that. But everybody else is, is on a pretty good track.
So anyway, so, uh, D was, um, develop a sustainable program for use of three resources. For professional development available through the town's insurer, M I I A, and I said this program is underway for the staff. Through M I I A, even resolving the town who's been involved with the program at the MMA conference in June. So I felt like there were two fives and two fours, and that's why it was a four, four and five, and then I threw in a question that I had. Our department had meetings in town.
Those officers had like. Um, and I, 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 I realized doing the budget, that, uh, we didn't have any non-budget meetings.
Right.
Which is something in the next year I'm gonna have to. Concentrate more on making sure that we're having more general department head meetings as, as well as budgets, budget.
Okay. So that's, that's my reason for my, my game, that's it, that's I did. Alright, number six, um, personal and professional growth of the administrative, are these numbers off? One, two, it should be.
No, they're, they're the same.
I know.
Six, personal professional growth.
Yeah, but I think that's actually the four. Um, anyway, never mind, don't, don't listen to me, just keep going with the six. Keep rolling ahead. Um. Number six, personal and professional growth of the administrator, you did a three, mine is actually a three point five. The four is bolded and should not be, mine is a three point five. Um. So, and it was attended to job, specific professional meetings, seminars and conferences, so. Yours was a three, mine was a three point five, go ahead.
Um, I, he's attended the trainings, I know that when I've called in to talk with him, he's had the training, you know, and I'm like, good, good for him. You know, um, but what I do, what I do like about when you devote to trainings and there is some tidbits of. Information to pass on, you pass it on right away, and I think that's really important as well.
My, my comment was, it's been a pretty busy year in general, so making the time to attend trainings was a little bit difficult. I like that you established the rate relationship with TAs in our region, I know that isn't necessarily training, but. Uh, it would be great if you were able to schedule the time to attend other trainings as well, I left something out. Uh, specifically, specifically those that you mentioned in the self evaluation, there was something about MMA in here, I must have lost the second translation. Um, that you did attend MMA conference, and I think it's sometimes the to go away to. We move yourself from.
Sure, there are several in Las Vegas that I can. There's actually one that I'm gonna be, that's, that's, uh, coming up in June, the M M M A conference in June. On, somewhere on the Cape, it's a very long way away even from my house, so I'll probably end up. Going to that, but having to stay, cause it's a long drive to get out to. The, out to the curb in June.
Right, especially in the summer. So that was, uh, um. Needs a little bit more. Um, so town building infrastructure. You gave a two, I gave a four, so. Go ahead.
Um. I think I've been clear in the past about what I'm looking for as far as the town building infrastructure, um, I. Believe that you haven't had the support that you need for that. Um. I, I just think that there should be a better support team regarding town properties in general, um, and I've. I, I think there can be a lot of, a lot more improvement in here, um, I can see that since you've started, there's been a, a main focus. And your focus has been what we've told you to, as far as, you know, fiscally, being more fiscally responsible, which we are. Um, having a better understanding of where we are in general, because we really didn't have a roadmap, we just had like a blank. Screen, and with the, the, the board, the former board that we have, we really had to look at, this is where we're at right now. Uh, and I think you've been putting out fires as you, you know, I call it whack a mole, you know, when something comes up, you're, you're kind of, um. Uh, being able to put it all together, I believe that, you know, you're, you're gonna be able to put us on a better path with the town buildings. And for right now, but, um, we need to find some support for you, I think, in that respect.
So mine was a four, um, and I, I kind of veered away from the. Evaluation plan for town properties and the plan for building, uh, for the next five years and moved for the fact that. We put out three R F Ps for the unused town buildings, those are posted. Uh, the shared streets and spaces work, um, that you helped with and the R F P for that, that wasn't part of this plan. But it got done, I mean, I know that that isn't a, it's infrastructure, um. Same with the work on the Mass Trails Grant that you participated in and. Meeting with Anne Gagden regarding the properties of the town itself, the mass vision game, that wasn't part of the plan, but it happened. So these were the extras that you did over and above what was in what we were looking for. The overall plan for the buildings is still incomplete, but will hopefully get done by the end of the fiscal year, uh, I'm being really. Um. Optimistic, no, not that, optimistic. By the end of the fiscal year, be a consultant with Arpa funding.
Yes.
So that, I mean, there's still time to get that done, there's two more months in your fiscal year, so, um. So that, that was why I put the four in, so things are moving along.
Yes, I agree, in general, yes.
And a lot of things happened that were not necessarily on our radar. Um, when we put this plan together, so then general comments, yours, I think, you put under town administrator call. So those were the, the five areas where we wanted you to look, um. So, um, wanna read your general comment, and then I'll go to mine, and then I'll do the addendum, which you don't have, but that's okay. But.
I just put that Eric, I believe Eric will grow more in his position here, and his positive attitude and ability to work with. Um, I can't read my own writing there, uh, difficult people, yeah. Um, it, it goes along with what I said, I think your personality is absolutely perfect for not only. The position here, but the town in general, uh, you, you have a way of cutting through the, the fog. And going directly to the point and addressing it in, in a polite and respectful manner, and I, I appreciate that, I respect that to the most value. Thank you.
So mine says Eric's knowledge of Massachusetts general law and his overall understanding of municipal government has been an asset for the town towns. He's learned the ways of towns and quickly and done an admirable job of getting the town up and running. After not having a four point five administrator through a year, both the employees and the town people find him approachable, which is so refreshing. I'm looking forward to watching the town settling under this guy. So.
Thank you.
Um, but I did go, so there's a page, I'm gonna sign this, and then you need to sign. Um. Uh, and then, there was an addendum that we, these were our wish list items. Did you get the addendum?
I did, but I didn't.
Well, I commented on the addendum, because there were, this is another reason for those little bumps to the right. Um, one was Community Presentation Act on the Town Meeting Warning for Consideration, this was our wishlist. And it's on the A T M warning format. Uh, applying for, or planning for grants for the next five years. Although there is no five-year plan, there is now a land use coordinator in place, and we did apply for the B L T A A grant for help with that. There is a mass trail grant in the works, and the pre-application was made for community one stop launch. So these were our wishlist items, and they were things that they get done. Uh, energy aggregation, mostly for the community and town buildings, mostly done. Um, we just need the vote from the community, but the municipal was completed, so. I'll go there, uh, further investigation of a D P W, a town engineer, a project manager, grant administrator. Town roads, find a fiscally appropriate way to fix the roads. Personnel policies and procedures reviewed, those, those, those three are still kind of rolling around out there. And then the last one, the retiree health insurance planning, and planning produces some progress, it's, it's starting, so. Um, those were all. So there's a spot for you to, um, I think the, um, spot. Spot for you to sign, if you wanna sign each of ours and put your own comments in. Or you can wait for the summary, the one I'm gonna work on with Cal.
I'll just, I'll sign the summary, that's probably the easiest way to, but.
Well, you want my sign?
Sure. Thank you.
And you have that signed, it's what we gave it to Cal. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you both very much, I really appreciate the, the comments and the compliments, and, um, uh, I think. Um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we are on the right path, and that it will, will continue on the right path. Going forward and try to make sure we're doing the best we can for the town.
I'm looking forward and watching for this.
Um, there's a lot of loading going on. Uh, four point six building departments, um, I, I wanted to add this because I wanna take some action on this. Tomorrow, if I can, okay, so I wanted to get some input from, from the board if we needed it. So we have the permitting software. That I assume is in place, I know that it's been loaded, I know that it's been, they've, they've been doing tests.
And Jan, Janet and Eric, and, uh, both had training on it. Um, it wasn't last Friday, it was the, the prior Friday, they actually took a morning off and had an intense training.
Okay.
Um, so they're, they're.
We have it on our server, and they've been, they've been running. Their, their tests through it.
Yes.
So. We have, uh, an engineer coming tomorrow to, um, configure the laptop. Which that laptop is going to be used for the public facing. Is that what that's?
No, the laptop is gonna be used for the inspectors who don't have computers to come in and result the, 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 um.
Gotcha, so that's gonna be for the inspectors and them to come in and, and use that.
Yeah.
So, the, the question that I have is that, um, Janet's requesting email addresses for them. Is it just email addresses with the town's extension on them, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And so. Because, so the, the electrical inspector needs to have an email address or to log into the system. To result, or to review email electrical applications and result electrical permitting.
So. They need a login to the town server.
Well, not just that, but they also get notifications to the town, to a town email address. When applications come in that they can click and review.
Well, I can point, we can get a pointer to a town email address that, that. What I'm trying to figure out is what permissions they're going to need, I can take a, you know, I can give them an email address. And point to their Gmail account or whatever, cause that's how it usually is, or I'll have to put them on the town's domain.
Alright, so the one thing I need to, the one question I need to have answered in my head is. Because this is a cloud-based system, do they even have to touch our server?
Correct.
To do the resulting, and that I will have to, I have to.
If the answer to that is no, then we can just set up a pointer to their, their own personal email or a email that they create. Um. It will go to the town email address, but the town email, email address will forward to whatever email that they have set up.
It won't like do anything itself, it's just.
Right, so it's, we don't, cause if they do a login, that means that they're gonna have Word and Excel and all of that kind of stuff.
I don't think they need, I don't believe they need that, but I'll, I'll double check.
That's what I need, once we, if, if you can send me, once they find that out, I, I've already got, um. Guardian knows what, what we're looking for, so I can just send them an email and get it set up ASAP for them.
And the one other thing we do need is the P C, that this is gonna be set up for the public.
Correct, and where is that, what is that?
It's, it's, it can, well, so my thought was that we, we order a new, a whole new system, give it to Janet. Take Janet's older system, because the public doesn't need a fast one, it's only gonna have, they're only gonna be accessing one application from it. Move Janet's out to the, as, as the customer-facing ones, since it's an older computer.
So we need to get a quote for a new, new desktop system.
Yeah.
Okay, so you are aware that this is part of the Arpa.
So there's sixty thousand dollars in Arpa.
Yeah, that was for K I O S.
Yes.
Which I thought were gonna be down in building and up in land use.
So, when, well, once, well, once we roll in land use into the same thing, it's gonna be have the same, we're gonna have to have the same function of, there's gonna be another.
Thing there.
Another public-facing computer there.
Correct, we're just looking at the building.
They're not ready to roll yet, so we wouldn't get it, but, but we would do the same thing, using that sixty thousand dollars. We're gonna find out whoever has the oldest P C up there.
And that would be.
Give the new P C to that person, and then the old one will just configure for the public, couple of public users.
Okay, and let me say one other thing, I thought there were also supposed to be, um.
I had.
Tablets that inspectors could take in the field.
Yeah.
Enter them, okay, I'm just making sure that, that this doesn't get lost.
That's phase forty-five.
Yeah, yeah, although it's coming in quicker than you want, I think, I think that's, it's, that, that is.
All of these are happening all at once, so that's why I wanna make sure we have the.
We definitely need these other things before that, because we gotta have the, a way for them to result things. And for the public to input them and get instructed on it and put them in the office, but tablets are definitely something that. Eric's already ready, ready, you know, we're gonna roll on Eric one really soon.
So do we wanna purchase them outright, or do we wanna lease them?
The tablets?
No.
Oh, the.
The, the new, the new desktops.
I think we wanna purchase them.
Purchase them?
Yeah.
And use the existing equipment that we have for them?
And use the existing equipment for the public facing.
Yes, yeah. So I would need to know if they are gonna be, if I'm gonna be forwarding to their email address, I need to know their email addresses.
Okay.
And if they're not, I'll work with Guardian to see what we can do to do some kind of, we'll figure something out.
Okay. Now talk to Eric and Janet for a second, okay?
Any other question?
Yeah, I would just encourage you to meet with December twenty-four, how much money we're gonna use in that town.
Not December twenty-four, twenty twenty-four though.
December twenty twenty-four, exactly.
Oh, we'll know.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yes, we will.
I told, I told you, on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, any money that we don't know, we're bringing, we're putting into a big revenue replacement line. So we can do anything we want with.
Okay.
Alright, so.
As long as it's plus.
We're gonna move forward then tomorrow.
Okay, alright, and I will send you an email with that response as soon as I talk to Janet.
Great, Eric. Um, work session five point O Arpa projects, do we have any updates on that? I didn't see anything.
I don't believe so.
Um. That administrator updates and reports five point one.
Um, only just, um. Uh, so very brief ones, the social town meeting and the youth town meeting warrants were both posted today.
Um, can we have those posted on the website, please?
Yes.
Have they already been?
I will have to check. Uh, they, we have, both Sabrina and I have got, have emails of the certified copy of them, but I'll check to see if, I don't think the clerk's office has posted them, so I will send them to Harrison. And I haven't posted them.
I was wanting to post it last year.
Um. Um, as came up in the meeting today, we do have our new community services. Uh, staff member starting on Monday, so that's, uh, very exciting. Um, she's been in a couple of times to work on paperwork, and she seems really excited about, about starting as well, so. That's a good thing, I think, as you said, on the sixteenth, we'll ask her to come to the, to the board of parliament, so if you haven't met her by then.
I know, it's not been posted yet.
Okay. Um. Um. I think that's it, I think, we're doing else we've, we've looked on.
Um, five point two, reports from board liaisons. General government, not sure, um.
Can I, can I help in there on that?
On general government?
Well, I, maybe this is a different belief, but yeah, the energy committee sent out things for rise, I forwarded them to you. Because I didn't see you on the list. Um, and one of the things, it's number five in the five attachments, is for solar panels on. Is for solar panels on this field.
Right, I saw that.
Okay, so, uh.
I would love to know that's not a go.
Uh, okay, because, um, there are. However, if they would like to put canopies in the parking lot out here. However, that would have to go through the historic, um, district commission, correct? So, um.
I wonder if they're, they could put canopies on the jest street block.
Oh, now there's an idea.
Good idea.
Especially if you, if you attach some lighting underneath them, it would add lighting.
So that, so, yeah, so just take a look at that and direct it that way.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Thank you. Um, so that was that one, I wanted to talk about first one, to before the moment.
Sure, you can, you can do that under announcements.
Okay.
Um, elected boards, um, I know that we had a discussion in regards to the water departments, um. Want to say grand opening, but that's not what it is, it's a groundbreaking, there you go. Um, so that is, um, definitely a, a go for July. Um, so I'd like to have the board of selectmen, I'd like it, if you and Sabrina can go along as well, that'd be great.
Do you have a date for that?
No, it's July eleventh, I think, but I, that's off the top of my head. Um, they do have, um, they're working on a flyer, and they will be submitting, and we can have Harrison posted beforehand. Um, but I know Senator Coleman is coming, we've invited, um, uh, Representative Faris David. And any other people, if you think important, that we need to let Dave know, and then Dave will send out the invitations. Um, but, so probably gonna be something short and sweet, um, I'd like to see somebody from, um. I actually sent a, I, I will be sending an email out to somebody from the newspapers, see if they would come in, that's from Jake. That would be good too. Welcome. Um, public safety, anything from public safety?
No, I don't think so.
Five point three announcements in communications, if you wanna.
Okay, so.
Talk about Earth Day.
Let me just write a bunch of things on it. Um, conservation commission, there is a meeting next week, Wednesday, change to the regulations. Those can be changed without a town meeting vote, and, um. So if, if you, um, are interested in that, that's something to look at.
Can I just ask a question about that? Do you know, that's the one that they're discussing, is the wetland?
And so wetlands by law.
By law.
The regulation, uh, not the bylaw, the regulations, the bylaw would require.
Do you know if there was anything, I'm gonna be trying to make it to the meeting anyways, but is there any event that? That caused them to need to change this?
I don't think so, I think it's just a regular, you know, update of policy and. Just a, you know, I've, I've looked at them, I don't see anything that's gonna make me, or anybody, I'm from the Shannon. A lot of wording clarifications, um, there.
Um, there's a lot of information, more information that.
A bunch of them from staff, so this is staff trying to clean up the regulations.
Yeah, okay. There, there was nothing earth-shattering for me, um, I, there's one thing that I have a question about, but other than that.
Thank you.
So there's a, um, CPA, uh, meaning preservation, do we, so this is Earth Day, so now we're on a.
Okay.
Um, so. I'm gonna be there noon to twelve, at least, you're setting up, is that true, um? Teresa?
I thought I was bringing the canopy, and you were doing the first shift, she was doing the middle shift, and then I was breaking down.
Okay, what about the tables?
I was bringing those.
You're bringing those, okay.
But I wasn't planning on being there, I was gonna set up and then leave.
Okay, that's what I thought, so I will be there ten to twelve.
Okay, um, so I set up, I'm gonna have it set up at eight, and by the time you show at ten.
I'll be there a little bit before ten.
Okay, right, but it'll be all set up, table, table, court, do you need a chair?
I'll bring a chair.
Okay. Uh, and then when it's, I'll tell the last shift, and when it's time to break it down, I'll break it down, put it all, and, and take it back.
I'm gonna bring the flyers, we got email during the meeting from Ross saying that they have the information for the. Um, aggregation, what about CPA?
I played phone tag with the director of the City of Community Preservation Coalition today, so I, I just haven't had attention, I haven't had attention to them. So I hope to get attention tomorrow, and I will actually go to, to them and pick up flyers if I have to, absolutely. We don't have to bring them.
Now, what about the wording for the CPA warrant article? Um, did that change from what we looked at last week, I thought there was a.
That was one of the things that Adam did, he did change, he suggested that we put the act, he, he, he. Disagreed with the Community Preservation Coalition, and thought that we should put the actual things in the, in the warrant article, so they're there, the warrant article has the actual. Proposals in addition to the generic language.
In other words, the, um.
The two percent and the two.
And the two exemptions, okay, so I pulled off the website, the. Same website that you were looking at, the Community Preservation Coalition website, they have a listing, teeny, teeny numbers. Of the, so if you do exemption one, which, which is the income exemptions, it tells us what they are. Um, or what number of people in your family, et cetera, et cetera, and the, the process is. Um, a form needs to be filed on an annual basis with the accessory's office.
Just like any other abatement.
Okay, so we're right, um. Because I do want this information somewhere, and I try to get bigger, if you can get it.
Please, than that, I think that would be definitely true.
Or, so anyway, I'd like to see what is gonna be there for the Community Preservation Act, cause I think we need to talk about. Um, so, alright, so let me know what to do.
As soon as I get the information, I will, I will let everybody know.
Okay, and then the last thing I have is, um, and this is kind of my closeout. Um, the CR for Swannock Meadows, um, I'm gonna get, by Friday, I'm gonna have something to you. And to the, um. An HESD for review, um. Not by Monday, um, but anyway, we'll see whether I need to pay for it or not, um. So, um.
Then we just need to find the CR.
Right, so if you want me to continue that search, I will be happy to. And I'll.
Random citizen. Yeah, he's gone, so he's.
So, um, anyway. Alright, and I have had initial conversations with Mike Jones and N H S D. So, um, get all the information through.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
So we have, um, elections that are going to be on Monday, April twenty-fourth. And then we have a week after that, our town meeting, which is May second, correct? Um, and then our next board of selectmen meeting from there is the sixteen to player number, correct?
Correct.
Sixteen to late, okay. So the advocate name. Um. So we are at five point, we can't take any comments, so.
I just wanted to. Just Veronica's last night meeting, and I just wanted personally, as an ex-selectman, working with her for the sixteen months. It was an honor to work with her, her professionalism in everything that she did for this community. We ought to be proud of her, and I wanna thank you very much for your, your time and your services.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Um, anybody else wanna comment? Speak now. Um, five point five review on signed payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Um, I, I make a motion that we review and sign payroll and bill the federal warrants out of session.
I think I. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then executive session.
Um, I make, make a motion that we enter. I make a motion that we enter executive session pursuant to general law, statute thirty A, section twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an opening meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the. Bargaining position of the town and the chair, so declares. Um, so you.
I do declare.
And, um, adjourn, uh, the session, or adjourn for the second.
Second thought. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.